Let's pray. I take my reading, reading comes from Luke 2:9, 10, and 11. Verse nine, "And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were so afraid." Verse 10, "And the angel said unto them, 'Fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be all people.'" Verse 11, "For unto you this day is born in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord." Heavenly Father God, we thank you for what you have done for us and what you're still doing for us, Lord. You was, you was born in a, in a manger, probably a cave. It was a humble circumstances and, but you came to save the world from their sins. And Lord, I appreciate everything you do for us. And Lord God, you as well to lay down your life for us so we'd have life and have life more abundantly. And Lord God, help us to draw an eye unto you every day of our lives, and we give you praise and joy. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start this morning with an update from the Frontier District. Jessica Floria, District Agent, is going to share with us. Always look forward to hearing good things about what's going on in the county.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. It's a goal of ours to get in front of you just a little bit more and share what's going on with Extension. You know, we used to come in front of you guys quite regularly when we were just a county. And now that you're a district, we, you guys don't directly deal with our budget, so, but we're just trying to form that connection with you guys again and keep you updated with what's going on. And so just a couple of things I just thought I would shed some light on. I'm Jessica Floria, I'm the 4-H agent. So I deal with youth development in the counties. And we have just been granted, been approved for four summer interns through the state. And we've had these for the last two summers and have been able to create a lot of impact in our communities. The grant was given to the state office to help combat COVID learning loss that happened during those, those two years. And so we do a lot of school enrichment type of activities out into our communities. We've been working a lot with Ottawa Library. We made connections with the ORC last year and have continued those here through the fall. And so we're excited to, to see where this takes us this summer. I've, I made a connection with Ottawa High School and their STEAM bus. I don't know if you guys have seen that. But we deal a lot with that, all that, that science, technology, engineering, math, and art. We really focus on those areas. Another area that we've really focused on when talking to teachers and everything about what, what did kids really struggle with during that time? And what are they seeing now was just the mental health of our youth. So we've done a spin biking program, just getting kids outside, physical activity, and just, you know, working on things that help them find a love for something in their life and help them thrive. Another thing I thought I would share with you that's going on in Extension right now is Juanita Slichter. Our office professional is retiring. I will have a party for her on the 14th down here at the Extension office. And then we've rehired somebody for her position, Kristin Blafus. So we're excited to see that transition happen too. We're learning more and more about K-State 105. I don't know if you guys have heard that yet. But the university has been given some money, and the concept is K-State in all of the 105 counties in the state of Kansas. And it's money geared towards helping communities thrive. So in the youth department, we're looking for anything that we can help with, come in and help with workforce development, entrepreneurship. I've made a connection with Paul already to see what I can be doing to help there with some of his adventures. So anything you guys think of that you need help in those areas? And just even on up into, you know, infrastructure, healthcare, all those type of things. If you see an area that you guys need help with and need some more manpower around those type of topics, some of those things that are just really, our communities are struggling with that we see too, please reach out to Extension and let us know how we can, we can help. So those are just a few things that I wanted to highlight. Is there any questions for me this morning?
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
All right. Do we have any other correspondence or organizational business?
No ma'am.
Do we have any public comment today?
Nope.
We'll move on then to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the meeting on November 29. Claim vouchers in the amount of $810,986.88 for November 15th, and claim vouchers in the amount of $278,763.38 for November 30th. Tax change orders in the amount of $23.34 for check change orders 2023-28 through 2023-44.
That should approve.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And our first item of business is to discuss and consider approval of the 2024 Pomona Law Enforcement Contract. Sheriff Jeff Richards.
Good morning Commissioners. This is just a renewal of an annual contract that we do at the City of Pomona. Just as a reminder, for us to enforce any of the city ordinances, we have to have a, a contract to be able to lawfully do that. And so that is the main purpose of this. The contract terms remain the same as far as the services provided. And the, what changes each year is typically just the amount. This year it did increase just over $2,000. Excuse me, so the total amount of the contract would be $74,422, and that is consistent with our SRO contracts as well. So we, we're consistent across the board. We get these numbers by working with HR to figure out what salary and benefits would be for, for a deputy. And so that's, that's where those numbers are derived from. The City of Pomona did approve this, this contract on their end at their December 4th meeting. So if you guys will approve this contract, then we'll get it all finalized and it'll be, it'll be taken care of for another year. So other than, other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'll happy to answer.
Just to comment, I think we've been doing this for I don't know how many years. I don't remember any issues ever coming up from year to year, so.
Sounds like it's working.
A win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
To approve this, make a motion to approve the 2024 Pomona Law Enforcement Contract as presented for the amount of $74,422.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item of business, consider waiving the building permit fee for new residence for Tracy and Kelly Fisher. Pat Toad?
Good morning, Commission. So in the past, we've worked with our constituents for hardship situations, and we had an individual or a family have their house burned down, down by the Williamsburg area. And we've already started the process of rebuilding their new home and all that. But what we've done in the past is we've waived fees for hardship, tried to work with our people in situations that were, trying to lessen the burden, I suppose, for those individuals when they go through such a situation with the trauma and everything like that. Again, we're just asking to be able to refund the permit costs so that they can continue working on their house. And then it kind of gives us the good PR that we like to utilize.
Actually, this is something we've done as long as I can remember. In fact, I remember the very first one was actually mentioned Jim Kimble down Princeton when he locked his home. He was actually a firefighter. And locked his home. And that was, I brought that to the, he was in my district. And I brought it, and we brought it. That's been over 20 years ago.
Right.
So, and I don't remember as long as it was approved by your department, as that's what's happened, you know? And that's existing, we've always, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor? Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right, and then the third item of business, consider the approval of rezoning application 2310-2088. You rezone approximately 42 acres from the A1 Agriculture District to the RE Residential, Residential Estate District.
Yes, so this property is located just north of Pomona. It's got one property between the city line and our, the property that we are discussing right now. It is commonly known as 3251 Colorado. It's less than a mile north of the city, city line. Right now, what we have is a 42 acre lot, and we have a family that would like to take that and give each individual family member their own section of that lot, which eliminates it from 42 and brings it down to about 13.5 each. Where, we looked at the land itself, and it is not considered prime farmland. It is on a relatively uneven level of elevation. It slopes to the north quite significantly, so trying to farm that would be relatively difficult. There's already one house on the property to the north. It is actually being, it's a mobile home, which is being removed. And that will be then transitioned into a new home, which they want to build onsite. So we are approving the area. The other two properties would be just left alone. There isn't any plans for it at this time. But they're just trying to break up a trust of a family member that is, I don't know if they're deceased or if they're in that. It is, if you look to the south, we have one lot that is an RE already. And as the, as Pomona potentially grows, I would foresee these lots being even further dwindled, smaller. You have right to the east there, Pomona already owns that property for their landfill. So there's a good chance that eventually this will end up in the City of Pomona at some future point. I'm not saying that would be immediately or anything in the near future, but as our towns generally grow, that is probably a direction they would be moving. So it does meet the area for size. And as you can see to the north, everything still is in that agricultural realm in large lots. But in the proximity of this, of Pomona, I think this meets the qualifications for rezoning to RE.
Anybody have any questions for Pat? All right, otherwise, an affirmative action would be? And this was recommended by the planning commissioner.
Yes ma'am, sorry.
Unanimously.
Unanimously, yep.
All right. I didn't get down far enough. I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2310-2088 to rezone approximately 42 acres from the A1 Agriculture District to the RE Residential Estate, and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly. Do I have that motion?
So move. Thank you.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. There we go. Well, we got them all. All right, that actually concludes our business. Then we'll move on to staff reports.
Yeah, just real quick, have started preparing for our retreat. Looking at, originally, we were talking about mid-January. That doesn't work super well for Janet, which is just fine. Thinking probably last week of January now, which bleeds into February, so sometime 29th, 30th. Going to look a little different this year. Historically, we've had a dedicated kind of Public Works Day. Not going to do that this year. Going to have a dedicated Planning Day. Just about the county's development philosophy, what we would like to see moving forward, what a timeline for comp plan revisions looks like. That's, that is upon us, or is very nearly upon us. So trying to get the same page on that. Not anticipating recommending any kind of immediate action, but we, we are going to have to start at least talking about wages and preparing for what that next adjustment looks like. Because as you are all very well aware, we know more than did our adjustment, and everyone around us did the same. And we need to just talk about, is that a sustainable model? Which I don't think it is, but how do we continue to remain competitive in an ever-changing environment around us? So I will tell you, when Janet and I put the budget together, we talked about this. And, and that's part of why we stayed revenue neutral. We felt like we could, but we also understand that wages are going to continue to be a topic of discussion. So we're not caught off guard by this. Just something we want to at least have initial discussions with all of you about. That is all I have today, so thank you.
All right, Pat?
Okay, so about a couple of weeks back, we had a individual complain about a neighbor that did not have water. I have since received an application for a variance and alternative source of water to that house at the Will cuts. We are going forward with trying to navigate how to get this house water because it is a difficult situation. But I just wanted to let you guys give an update so that even anybody listening knows that we are working on the situation, and we are probably moving forward to, to a good solution that will satisfy all parties involved. So just wanted to get that update on there.
Thank you. Al Bean, do you have anything today from FCDC?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Just a couple of things, want to follow up. I've been working with Jessica. Jessica and I actually went and spoke to a group of students over at West Franklin about the YEC event, and trying to encourage students to participate in that entrepreneurship challenge. And then both her and I were at attendance at a, an FFA contest, discussion contest, last week over at First Baptist. And had a chance to talk to those kids about the YEC event as well. So enjoying the partnership with Jessica and really appreciate her, her efforts. And the other project that I'm, kind of in front of me right at the moment is last week, or two weeks ago, working with Whit O'Brien, which is the firm that the state's kind of contracted with to help us with grants. We discovered a grant that is due December 29th for the stormwater project for Princeton. And so been multiple meetings with Whit O'Brien and getting information pulled together. Hopefully get that submitted before Christmas. It's about an eight hundred and some thousand dollar grant request. No match is required. So we're trying to get that money for Princeton, or yeah, Princeton for their stormwater. So that's a project, big project working on right now. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hey Paul, you know, kind of, there was a deal discussed with the Welsville Chamber where you was going to help take part in. You might discuss that?
Sure. Welsville Chamber met yesterday, and they've really got some nice young leadership that's pretty energetic. They're doing Chamber coffees and, and doing outreach in, in the business community. One of the things we're working on is helping with their marketing. And so they agreed to a contract with KOFO for a month, for a year, to do some promotions to promote the different businesses and activities in Welsville. And so FCDC is going to pay for the first two months of that to help the Chamber kind of get off and running on that as they build their, build their program. So we were happy to support their efforts and kind of partner with them in that regard. Thanks.
Brenda Fitzmaier from the Health Department.
Commissioners? Good morning. Well, I just want to give you a quick update. I know since I started, we've been talking about ways to improve our community health, and we've made great strides. And I am just here today to update you on one of the latest opportunities that we have. The City of Ottawa HR Director, Michelle, has reached out to me asking us about what the Health Department can offer for services. And I did share with her our great successes with the drug screens and the physicals. She asked specifically about wellness and the wellness services and our capabilities of drawing their employee labs such as PSAs, lipid profiles, and Dasein glucose. And I believe if we did offer this, this would be a great way for us to, again, align with our commitment to enhancing community health. And so I'd like to have the opportunity just to visit with Michelle to discuss potential benefits about it. So just another opportunity. I know we've talked at length about different ways we want to get out there. So just wanted to give you an update and see if Derek wants to add anything.
Yeah, Brenda and I have had a couple of discussions about this. I, I think it, it represents a good opportunity to partner with the City of Ottawa. I have made her tell me over and over that she has the capacity to do this, that this isn't going to overwhelm her or compromise other parts of her vision. She assures me that it's not. It's not something we're going to make a ton of money on because we want it to be a partnership. And so, but we won't lose money either. It will just be basically a even trade, but feel like we should offer it in the spirit of partnership. But wanted your, the opinion of the five of you.
I'm just, I'm just going, oh, people are, people are hearing about us. People are, you know, realizing that, that we do have capabilities now that we didn't have before, so that's awesome.
Yep, yes, it's going very well also with the drug screens. I, we get some every day, which I didn't expect some every day. But it's great, nurses are doing outstanding job. We've got an amazing team, they're handling it well, so.
Awesome, all right.
Yes.
It fits within the spirit of what you do there, so.
Okay, great. Great, then I will do that. Thanks so much, appreciate it.
As Brenda was just up here, I wanted to let you guys know that we've worked, we're working with the Health Department, and they are going to be coming to the jail to do flu and COVID vaccines for any of the inmates that are, that are wanting those. So we appreciate the partnership. It makes it a whole lot easier and helps create a healthier environment in that closed up space for us too. So we appreciate that partnership. Here recently, Lieutenant Tammy Alexander graduated from the, from the Law Enforcement Leadership Academy Command School. And part of that is also getting her credentials as a certified public manager. And so we're proud of her. That was a, it's about a year-long program that happens through the, the KU Public Management Center. And so she put in a lot of hard work, and we're proud of her, and just wanted to make sure she's recognized for, for that hard work she's done. She would be the third person in our office to complete that CPM program. So we'll, we're lining up who our next one will, will be at this point. And also along the line of education, one of our jail corporals, Grace Lopez, will be graduating from St. Mary's University this weekend. So her bachelor's degree, we're proud of her as well. On the staffing front, we just filled our vacancy in court security. And so we, we are, we're full there, and we're, and we're making progress on our other positions as well. So anyone that's interested in a corrections job, we have some of those to offer, so if, if they, if they want those. But we are, we're still working on that. I just wanted you guys to, to know we're, are making some progress there. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin, anything today?
Nothing.
I will say that when we did our breakout session and just met with county, counties that were our size, one of the topics that came up was software, how expensive it is, and IT, and all the things that go with it. And I'm like, we are so blessed to be able to have, be able to do that, and then have an IT person that, when things come down the pike, I don't worry about our systems getting compromised. So appreciate you and your guys' work.
Yeah.
David Lee?
Okay, I've just got a, what's that?
I said Public Works, we're doing.
Yes ma'am, so I've just got a couple of things this morning. I'm working on the chip seal project for next year. This year, it's going to, in 24, the area that we're going to chip seal is kind of in the west part of the county. Roads that would be included, Colorado, north and south of Pomona, California, north of Williamsburg, LaBette, from Eisenhower over to Colorado. And then the section of Old 50 that's not going to be included in our reconstruction. So it's about the same linear distance as last year, about 44 miles.
What quadrant?
Western.
West, yep. So we will, we will tackle those roads this year, or this coming year. I did look into what it would cost if we hauled the chips ourselves. Based on last year's numbers, we would have saved about 30 grand if we had hauled the chips ourselves. So that if we go with limestone chips from a local quarry, we probably want to take advantage of that in the coming year. I'm still waiting on a return call for the cost related to the hay night. So hopefully have that for you next week. And so I am actively looking at that. I may have some more information to consider next week. But the, the approval to move forward with this will be on your first meeting in January. The other thing that I've got is on Osmond Terrace, that, that bridge that's under construction. They're going to be pouring concrete on the bridge deck tomorrow morning. So that project is moving right along, just like it has been from the beginning. Still on track for a, probably a late January substantial completion where we can open it up. And then finally, a few weeks ago, we discussed the holiday hours out at the landfill, trying to work on getting those folks out there a three-day holiday. After the meeting, there was additional discussion, and, and we reached out to all of the commercial trash haulers and discussed, you know, our, our plans for that and got their input, what we have decided to do with, with their thumbs up. In fact, the idea came from them. Instead of having Tuesday off after Christmas for the landfill staff, we're going to take the Saturday before Christmas. That gives them the three-day holiday that, that they would like to have without causing too much of an impact to the trash haulers. So they'll be ready to go on Tuesday morning, so that won't interfere with their holiday pickup.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I, I think that would turn out to be a, a good situation for everybody. And that's, that's all I have unless you have some questions.
Did we get a new loader in?
A new loader?
I seen a big front-end loader sitting out there. Bunch of people I didn't recognize around it.
They, so we got that early last year.
Okay.
Or early this year, I'm sorry. What they were doing, the, the vendor that we purchased it from wanted some other folks to, to see it in action, and so they came.
I didn't recognize the people around it, that's why.
They, they, they came down to our place to kick the tires on it, so to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to let you guys know that we have a budget amendment hearing scheduled for the 27th of December. We have to do that budget amendment by the end of the year for solid waste because of the collections they have out there. I have been making adjustments for next year, so hopefully we won't have to do that amendment. But we still need to do that this year. And according to the paper schedule and when we could get that in, that's the only time that we can get it in, before the end of the year. So we will be doing that. Also, I know you guys know, I've been sending out, when we do our approvals for accounts payable, I've been sending out the full report, so you guys have that to see what vendors that we paid. That used to be something that really only the chair would stop by and be able to see, but with our new system, I'm able to provide that to all of you guys in a, in a format on your weekly emails. So we are trying to come up with a solution of what we're going to provide for you guys consistently for payroll. We met yesterday on that. So we are continuing to make changes and, and try to find consistency to bring you guys information. Hopefully in the new year, when we get more comfortable with the system, I'll be able to come to you guys with some financial updates with where we're at throughout the year. So we'll be able to have more information to you guys, so.
The only budget amendment, solid waste? And that's a positive, that just, it's because there are more deposits than we expected, more people brought us trash. So that's really impressive.
impressive. I mean, to put together numbers for a budget almost two years ago, but a year and a half ago, guessing what would happen and what expenses and revenues would be now, this time of year.
That's what took a bit of extra time is between the two systems and really just trying to double check everything. Some funds that we've normally had to do amendments on would be like the Annex Fund, but everything seemed to be really good there. Also, the ambulance from time to time has had, had to have an amendment, but as you know, their revenue has been down. And so their expenses have not been significantly higher and, but we will may have to probably make an adjustment with their transfer, but that will just be transferring less money into reserves because they have less funds available. But Christie and I are, are looking at that together and we'll get that, we'll probably have the, the transfer resolution on that same day as we have the budget amendment too. So we can just wrap up all those end-of-the-year budget items together.
Sometimes we have share, but you never know on, you know?
Right.
So, and so that's awesome that we've kept all those expenses down. So good job. Good job, everybody. All right. We'll move on to Commission. Anything?
Kind of, kind of touched on last week. I'll just hit a couple of things that impressed me. Glad Brenda's here. I went to a deal, I think I was the only one there because we didn't really know how important it was, the meeting, but I did go to, it was what powers do you have and what is on the Board of Health powers. And that gentleman there from Douglas County that represented them and several lawsuits they had during the COVID and all them. And, and it's kind of interesting, didn't know it would be when it started, but it was pretty interesting, the conversation. And it got down to, he found some statutes and stuff he didn't even know even existed until you got into that problem and had to go, because we never had a pandemic in our lifetime to that. And one of them was, he ran across the, I'll give it to Derek, so he got to look it up, with KSA 65129 on health nuisances in your county. And the Board of Health really regulates that and it kind of almost bypasses the courts. And so maybe something you want to look at, we talk about sometime or would help. But I thought it was really interesting because he said, it was interesting to him because it's somewhere he's never been before and most attorneys hadn't been before because we never had a pandemic to have to regulate through the Board of Health. So we might talk about that some, maybe even on retreat or some, or our next board. But you might, I'll give you that on that and look at it. The other thing, the one I'll mention that impressed me, it's something we've been talking about forever. And Ian has talked about it several times, the local Avalon Tax Production Fund. And they presented us with a letter from, from Vic Miller, was our, is our minority leader in Topeka. And he's put together a letter promoting reinstating that in the state of Kansas. And the, and the way they talked, it pretty well make it pass in the House, but in the Senate side is where our issue is. And they're, some go into names, but some of them that think it's a, they, they think they're using the title to sludge fund. And my deal is, if it's a sludge fund, why would we go revenue neutral this year? If we wanted to build a sludge fund, we wouldn't be going revenue neutral. And if we had an extra money, we just lowered it even further and lowered people's taxes even lower. I mean, you know, if we were in a sludge fund, we could do it ourselves, not, you know, doing what we do. You know, so, so that's, I don't know, but something. As a, I don't know, our county asked to put the TCM in, you know, why would you want to do that? And, and, I bet you, I know I mentioned it to Paul and he was going to send a letter for you to acknowledge the law, but it is.
He did.
No, no, he hasn't.
Ian, if I could, and, and I don't mean to talk about the LATVR, but just the conference in general. Good to go here, those various sessions and just, it's a good health check for the organization. You know, one of their keynote speakers talked about becoming an employer of choice. And as I was listening to that, I, I feel like Franklin County philosophically anyway, is, is right there. I mean, we do nearly all of the things that, that this particular individual, and there are a million different ways you can do it, but I feel like we do prioritize the right things. I think our execution at times, we can always communicate better. We can work with our employees better. But, but I do think our hearts are in the right place here. I think we're doing a lot of things very, very well. And, and our reduced rate of turnover, particularly in times when employees can go anywhere they want and make a lot of money right now. I'm really proud of how we fare there. So in numerous sessions we had, there was a communication section about how we use social media and, and we do the things they were talking about. We don't do the things that they tell you not to do. And just session by session, I was impressed with how Franklin County in particular fared in terms of guidance and what to do, what not to do. Should have said that during my staff report, but thanks, Don.
I'll just, part of going to the KAC Conference, Kansas Association of Counties, you talk to people and there's a lot of counties that have a lot of problems and they're big problems, really big problems. And then you actually come home and you go, I'm so glad that I'm in Franklin County and we have the leadership that we have and the, you know, and, and where we are, because there are counties that are really struggling and even how to pay their bills. So it, I think besides the information that we receive, the networking is awesome, really important. Some of the sessions that I went to was, one of them was on the Behavioral Health Center on, on mental health. And, and truly impacts us across the board. It doesn't make any difference if you're poor or richer or whatever, old or young, it, it touches your life probably. One of the things that was the most fun to listen to was Casey Wolf came and gave a presentation. Not a lot about leadership, but really about how you live your life and what the struggle he went to when he got hurt about 10 years ago and all the things. But just, just, you just came away just feeling good about life. Went to a solar one because that's something we're going to be dealing with. And solar coming to our counties. Went to one that was, Dustin went to an AI one, which kind of scared the bejeebers out of me. I'm just like, but they said the really, that the departments that are really using it at this point are Health Department and the Sheriff's Department. If we can get them to learn how to drive a motor grader, we would be in good shape. But really, they say it, it's coming. I'm not sure. I want to be up here when it gets here, but it's something that we need to keep our eyes and ears and, and open on because it is coming. And then, you know, in leadership, really about where our county is. The only other things I went to, I, two weeks ago, I went to, to the KAC Board Meeting and at the KCCA Conference on Wednesday, I was elected to serve on the KAC Board again for the next three years, just represent the Southeast Kansas County Commissioners. I did go to the ribbon cutting for glossy cleaners a week ago. And yesterday, the Ottawa Chamber had their monthly Board Meeting, set the budget for next year. And other than that, I think that's it. Other than, if you have the agenda for today, there is an executive session on there. We are not going to have the executive session today. So at this point, we are, are ready to. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Never mind.
I'm over here.
Oh, I just, I just went, I just took over there.
That's all right. I went to the KAC Conference also and what Ian and Derek and, and Don said is pretty much what it was. We, of course, went, went over home rule again. And county home rule is still one of their objectives of their legislative agenda. I went to a session on what counties could do to keep employees, how they recognize employees and appreciate their employees and, and what it takes to have a good workforce and to keep your employees. And it was kind of interesting. A lot of things we're doing is exactly what they covered in that session. So we're doing a, a good job of, of trying to appreciate our employees. And, and, you know, we're in a tough situation because the counties around us are, are paying a lot more for about every position we have. So it's very important that we do everything we can to have a good workforce and, and to keep all our good employees. I don't have anything else.
All right. All right. Now we're ready for a, so you rejoin.
Come on.
All right.
Thank you.